We are going to go ahead and start our special meeting on building and grounds. Today's date is March 6, 2025. The time is 2:00 P. M. In attendance are Commissioners Everline Duncan and Matarri. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. First item, Justice Center Furniture Procurement. It's an action item, and we have Director Jeff Foller from Building and Grounds.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Thank you for calling a special meeting so we can discuss this. With me today, I have Tori Nelson and Gwen Gunzle from Contract Design. They are the FF&amp;E company that we have selected to help us pick out the furniture for the Justice Building. And also, we have David Mendez with Turner Townsend here. As you know, we've had just a few things to kind of reconsider as far as the desk selection specifically that we've been talking about, and that's kind of our number one priority to kind of re-give guidance to Contract Design so they can continue pricing our full package option based off of manufacturing and, you know, the idea of tariffs and, you know, we originally received on Monday. I noticed that we probably could expect tariffs, and then we later received one that they would probably make us exempt for 30 days on those tariffs. So, but just to reiterate, initially, we'd been looking at pricing options from HBC Manufacturing and Global Furnishings. We'd initially had selected Global Furnishings based on some public comment and requests from the Commissioners. We did look at some few more options for you as well as some questions about the overall design of the products that we'd be selecting, mainly from substrate and the edge banding. And so Tori has done a lot of research on that, probably learned more about substrates than she ever thought she would know in her life. But she has been talking to manufacturers and engineers and has put a lot of information together. So before you is a packet of some information that I will walk you through this morning. On top is a spreadsheet looking one that's similar to what we've presented to you in the past. We have the options from Global and HBC on there as well as we've also looked at Indiana Furniture, OFS, and Herman Miller. So those are three other US-based manufacturers that we have done some pricing, just to look at some different options for that. As you can see, there's a fairly significant jump going from Global at roughly a $1,300 price point for a typical into pretty close to around that $1,800 range for Indiana, OFS, and Herman Miller. To specifically answer some of the questions about what kind of discounting are we getting, when we purchase as a government entity, we can go through these government contracts. We've talked a little bit about that. You approved yesterday the Aqualus contract, which would allow us to purchase the Global option, as well as Omnia would be another one that we could do with these other ones. And that's a pre-negotiated discounted rate that government entities can then just purchase under that pre-negotiated contract, just to answer that question. So we have the rates there of what the discount is applied to us off our, to give us our net price here that we'd be looking at. And then to answer some of the questions about construction, we have the, we're basically looking now in a thermally fused melamine line. I think that's kind of where we've landed with that. And then some questions about the substrate. So, you know, particle board, you know, as you see is, you know, the dense fiber that comes into a board. There's some questions about, there's different qualities of that. Pretty much all of these manufacturers are landing in what you call a 45 pounds per cubic foot, and that's basically the compression of like how densely this is packed with the glues and such in it. And that 45 pounds per square foot, I think, is pretty standard in the industry. There, it does go down from there, and then also there's a higher density is my understanding in that as well. But pretty much all of these are landing in that 45 pounds per square foot. I do want to clarify, when we initially presented, Global had told us based off of information, I think you said from when you called customer service, that it was an MDF. It is a particle board. So there is a little bit of a switch from what we've been talking about with that.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yes. So just wanted to be very clear on that, that when you started talking to engineering, they clarified, no, it is not MDF, it is particle.
It's the 45 pound per cubic foot particle board.
And in my experience, good MDF is as good as new too.
Okay. Yep. And then the thickness of the tops, they're all one inch thick, except for when you get into Herman Miller. It's one and an eighth inch. The edge banding, there's a little bit of difference there, you know. So the edge banding is basically when you, when you look at the edge of one of the samples, it's not the same thermally fused melamine. It's, it's a piece that is adhered that's a little bit different. And so this is PVC in most of them. You know, OFS, it's a polypropylene. It's still fairly similar. And then the laser edge banding on Herman Miller. And I'm not sure if you can explain the difference in the laser edge banding. I'm not sure I fully understand what that one is.
So laser edge banding is primarily just the way in which the edge banding is adhered to the surface. It's the laser that applies the heat. As far as what the edge banding is composed of, I was waiting for feedback. Polypropylene is what I would assume. Yeah.
So it's two millimeter.
This is actually, that one is three. I think it was three.
I think that one is, I think that one is three on that sample. This, this is a two millimeter. Look at that one.
Is this a 45 pound as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the, did you say two there's thins to?
Two on that one. That one's the sample actually.
It's kind of a large, so it's going to look a little different.
Yeah.
Interesting.
That sample in your hand is actually out of the courtroom that we're building. So that's the typical that we're doing for the die walls, the desks in the courtroom where the judges sit and such. So it's very similar to the product line that we're selecting for desks to show you.
And would that be the TFM thermally fused melamine?
So actually, that sample right there is a high-pressure laminate. That's the only difference in terms of what we're doing with, and we've kind of gone away from the high-pressure laminate. We did look at that option a couple of days ago with Global. We looked at an option. If you want to revisit that one, we can look at that again. That one is around 1,450, I believe, for that desk with the high-pressure laminate as opposed to the thermally fused. So I think we've landed on the thermally fused. It's probably adequate for a desk component that, you know, that we would be using typically. So. A couple of other just items to note here, you know, as we talk about, all of these are what we call BIFMA certified. Maybe Gwen, I'll let you speak on that. That's kind of an industry standard that just says these are high-quality products that meet the standard, but I'll let you maybe explain that.
Yeah, I think that was, it's, commercial furniture is BIFMA rated. It's different because you don't do that in your residential applications. And so also, even in my own office where I built out casework for break rooms or for restrooms, it's not BIFMA rated. It's just made by our cabinet, you know, I want to say guy from our contractor. But I just kind of wanted to go over what BIFMA is, and it's, it's a piece of furniture that has been tested and certified to meet the safety, the durability, and performance standards set by them, which is BIFMA is Business and Institutional Furniture Manufacturers Association. So they have their own standards for commercial use. So all of these manufacturers that we're proposing as options are all BIFMA rated. So that means a lot that we're not providing something that's not going to have that durability or meet that safety feature for your facility. So it's put, there's testing process, there's a standards focus, and then the benefit for the buyer is that you're selecting a product that has been verified and that has been established to meet the quality. So that's the backup in it for all of these manufacturers. So at least we've got that. It does separate you from a residential application.
Yeah. Or a standard generic buy at, you buy at Home Depot or a, you know, Target kind of type thing.
High commercial grade products. Yes. So those things that you might get staples at Home Depot probably will not be BIFMA rated. So. Hardware as in how they're all put together? Right. They're a little bit different between the three. I think we've already tackled the one on Global and HBC are the same, right? And so Indiana and?
OFS and Herman Miller are probably not going to be that cam and lock system. It's more of a true nail screw.
It's going to be a screw. Yeah. So it's a completely different application to where we're actually going to have the pieces that are going to, it's pre-fitted with hardware to where you're going to have, maybe it's a plate, and then you're going to have a screw that attaches the two pieces together. So you are, it is, the quality of the attaching parts going together is higher.
So do you have any hinges or anything like that on the product?
Are we doing?
Do we have hinges? Is that what you asked?
Like samples?
On overhead, on overheads.
Are you installing them or putting them in?
So they come, they come unassembled, and so their team, the Contract Design team will come be our assemblers on site.
What brand that is, the hinges?
Do not know.
No, each manufacturer has their own. And so again, it's put through the standard testing of the BIFMA. And so each manufacturer will have their own hardware. So it depends on if it's a door that's going to open. So you're familiar with it. So if it's going to be here or if it's going to be the drawers, are they ball bearing glides, you know? So we're not, it's, it's a little bit different than your standard hardware from Home Depot.
Yeah, because the good stuff is Bloom and so on and so forth.
But if we can find that out, that's not a problem. But when it, but when it comes down to that, I think at the end of the day, with the BIFMA rating and then also with the warranty that is attached to it, that that's, they're not going to put hardware in their products that's not going to last. Because they want you to enjoy the lifetime of your product, or, you know, they don't want to get the call to say, come fix it. And it's also attached to, we've had a product fail in the past that we won't sell anymore because the hardware inside of the particle board or the MDF, if you will, it couldn't take the opening of the user. The user was very aggressive, and, and it literally ripped the hardware out of it. So we don't even sell that line anymore. So.
I'm very familiar with that. I've put thousands and thousands of hinges in.
Yeah.
Like my crews would.
But we've got to also, I mean, for, for a commercial application like this, we're not using residential, you know, hardware at all. So this is, this is going, they're doing it based on weight for the object, assuming what's going to be put in there. And so they do their testing of how many times are they going to open it? How much can that?
Did you, was one of the brands Bloom?
I, sorry, I don't know. Sorry. I don't know. But we can find that out. If that's an important piece to this, we can do that.
Well, if you could, if you could get a piece of them, because we don't want these things falling apart.
And I can guarantee that that's not going to happen with any of these.
But if you could, if you could get a Bloom hinge and just see what it does and compare it to the other hinges, you know, your supplier is going to be, they'll understand and know what it is.
Well, and at this level, I mean, our manufacturers are global manufacturers.
Yeah. And I would, I would assume they probably are locked into who they buy their hinges from. If we suggested using a Bloom hinge, you know, that would be more going to a custom design on a higher-end build to say, you know, we request this as a spec and, you know, and at that point, we maybe should look at a local cabinet company to make our desks. Like, you know, Gwen was talking about with office furniture and, you know, some of the built-ins that we have, you know, in there if we want to get very detailed in exactly what we want to spec in that.
Did they give you a warranty period?
Yes, they did. Limited lifetime for most of them. A couple were 12 years.
That's Miller and OFS. Yeah.
Yes.
Were 12 years?
Yes. So 11th year, 11th month at the 11th hour call and say, it's broken. It doesn't work. They're going to take care of it, parts and labor, and that's really hard to find. And I'm not sitting here saying that your desk is going to fail, but that's what they're standing behind, you know, or your fileer, whatever the unit, the piece is, but that's, they're going to stand behind that. And that's three shift as well, if I may add.
I would recommend that once we get those orders all taken care of and we're, and we're good to go, we should probably buy 100 extra hinges, you know, various things of hardware for replacements because they don't all, they're, they're not generic.
And if I may add, I've been in the business for 25 years, and I have not seen a hinge issue whatsoever except in that one application because the material of that and the end user, the two things combined, made the product fail. And we did go in and replace those hinges, but in my 25 years, I just haven't seen it. I just haven't, just personally. So.
Commissioner Duncan, do you have any questions? I just have one, just to kind of refresh my memory here, but the thermally fused melamine and the thermally fused laminate, is there that much of a difference between the two?
There's, really, it's a term that's used symbiotically in the industry. I think melamine is a little bit older term, and thermally fused laminate is probably a little.
So they're basically the same?
This is, this is laminate, and also the same stuff as other laminate too.
Okay. So given the fact that there's no MDF in the Global, the HBC is starting to look pretty attractive here.
Yep.
Because that was really the value proposition for the additional dollar amount.
Yeah, it certainly was. Yeah.
I don't know if the contract is important. Yeah.
Yeah, one, one difference in there is, so HBC is not under a government contract. It's under a standard dealer rate. And so while the price is, is good, and it is a, so basically they are giving a discount on it at 58.5 percent. They are not under a government contract that we're buying through. The one question I would have with that, and we probably would need legal on that, is under the government contracts, we don't have to go out for bid because we've already, it's already a pre-negotiated government price. The HBC is not under that.
The HBC warranty is also going to look a little different. It's a limited lifetime, but I think there was five years for, for parts, for moving.
Yeah. Okay. And what is Global?
Limited lifetime. So it was, kind of varies by the product line, but we have all of it. If you guys want to have the warranty for each manufacturer.
So it's a $19,000 decision basis. 65 units, right? That's what we're looking at. What do you think, Commissioner Everline? You, this is kind of your bailiwick here. You know, is it worth the $19,000 to go either a little bit up or go a little bit down?
Control mechanisms for Global are warranted for 12 years.
So HBC five and Global 12?
Yes.
That might be worth 19,000.
See, melamine, melamine is a, it can be the substrates for this. And this stuff can be MDF and it'd be the substrate. So you have two.
Your microphone.
So, so you got two different products there, MDF and melamine.
Well, there's no MDF in this one. We thought that was in there, but it turned out that it's the same 45-pound per cubic foot particle board.
Then you're good there.
So then the question is, do we want to save the 19,000 and go with the HBC? You only get five years here and 12 years here on the limited lifetime warranty.
Where did they, how did they, now you're, how do you know USA is? I would, I'd probably go over here just because there usually is a reason for them to be more expensive.
Well, you got Canada versus Malaysia.
Which, which is your company?
We sell all the brands.
Okay.
So we sell them all. We, we're here to provide solutions for you that best fit your budget and aesthetic in your project base.
So, so if it was you, and you were going to do HBC versus Global, which one would you do? You're the experts.
Oh, you answered that.
David, can you hit your microphone too? Sorry. That's all for.
David Mendez with Turner Townsend here. There was a comment that I heard, and I don't know who made it. It might have been you, Jeff, that you, you went to your, the people that do the assembly of the, of the desks and asked them what the difference between those two products is. And I believe they said there was a difference. Can you comment on that? Thank you. I'd say that.
Carl, I did address our lead installer, and he had told me through his use and experience of installing HBC versus Global that there's a definite difference in the quality.
Global being higher?
Yes.
Cheap is, got, it's, it's advantages, but they're, cheap can also get you in a lot of trouble.
Well, you get what you pay for. So I guess the question is for 19,000, you know, going with the installer's recommendation or statement of experience that they see it as a better quality product. And it's not just the thickness of the desk. It's the thickness of the drawers and a number of other factors. And the fact that you get a little better warranty, it sounds like the $19,000 then is worth it just to go a notch up.
I haven't changed my mind. I said Global from the beginning, so.
Yeah. I'm fine with Global.
Okay.
Well, there you go. You have, you have corrections.
Because I think it's going to be the best.
Are you in agreement?
Roundabout.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine. I mean, it's, you know, the problem is that you just, I find myself kind of waffling a little bit based upon the variables. And I said, well, at that point, you might as well just go with a, something that has a little higher quality. You pay a little more, but you generally get more in the long run.
You know what I'd really like to do is I'd like to take a poker and put, go down over here and then flick it up and see how bad it.
Yeah, please don't.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the direction on that. So Contract Design will continue to go down that line, and they'll give us full pricing on full package. So, you know, the next step for this is they're going to build out the full package, including the conference tables, the judges' chambers in the robotic lines so that we have a full, yes.
And that's contingent on this letter being good.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
So they did, you know, they, they won our business, and so that's why they provided that letter as backup to, you know, provide some assurances of what they're committing to us. So.
All right.
Right now, no tariff surcharges have been implemented by Global, but we are 30 days exempt in the event they do within the next couple of weeks.
And that's, that's order placement, executed order?
Pass up. Yep. Order needs to be in by the fourth.
Are we wait?
That means our end.
On our end. Yes.
Yeah. So we need some time to turn that around. Yes.
Okay. All right.
So we do need, by the time that we do, however it is, by the PO to come back to us, we just need our time to cut the PO to, the purchase order to Global. Yeah.
Well, you guys have your list, right? You can get it to them tomorrow, Monday?
They, yeah, they have the list.
Oh, okay. So, okay.
Okay.
So chairs?
So that's just a matter of, of putting that pricing to that list that we've already generated.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the next component to the furniture is chairs, and obviously we brought some samples in so that you can see that. So this is the first look we've had at those chairs. I know that you guys asked to see some chairs, and so the chair on the left, just to kind of let you know what you're looking at, and I put some information on those chairs in your packet. That's kind of the last page that you have in there. So the chair on the right, the far right, and the chair on the far left are what we call the typical task chairs, the daily desk chairs in the off, in the line that we are going with with Global. It's actually Office2Go, which is a subsidiary of Global. And so that's the typical task chairs. The, the one on the right would just be a standard duty. The one on the left would be a heavy duty for larger employees that we have that feel like they need a little bit more of a heavy-duty chair. So those are the two primary chair lines. There is one other option that you can look at if you're interested in the, it's called the, is it the Hexi? What do you call it? Yeah, Hexi. That one has a little bit higher just standard rating. That's a 300-pound rated. The one on the left is rated at 350 pounds. The one on the right, I believe, is 250-pound standard rating. So kind of the level of seating for that, you know, if we wanted to consider a daily task chair that has just a, for about $55 more is what we'd be looking at for that one. And then the one on the second from the right is what would be proposed as the conference room chair and jury room seating. And then for the daily task chair, one thing to note as well is many of our departments have requested not having arms on them because they, they just don't want arms on them for the reason of, like, they have police officers come into their offices all the time. Some of them just don't want arms. So there's kind of the option with or without arms for those. And we'll have to clarify from the users who wants arms, who does not want arms. So.
For the, for the conference room chair?
The conference room chair, well, pretty much everybody unanimously in the meetings that we've said were no arms. And so I think we are just thinking standard, no arms. I don't think it even has an option of arms.
Yeah, this conference option does not even have arms.
Okay. So I'm just trying to figure out, because even though I have police officers in my office, they're not sitting in my chair.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously AMP probably wants no arms, and that's fine to deal with them. So is it possible that we can hang on to these and have people come and pick one? Or do we have to pick one?
I, I mean, yes, ultimately, I think we can hold on to them for a few days. That's kind of what you guys indicated. You know, my thought was to have some people from the prosecutor's office.
Jump on it and see if they're strong.
You know, decide if they need a heavy-duty versus a standard duty chair, you know, those kind of.
I guess ultimately, the question is what the price difference is in these chairs is, do we want to even present the Hexi as an option with it being a little bit more costly? The blue one. It is, it is the brand sit on it, opposed to the other three being OTG. So the warranty is 12.
Oh, oh, sit on it is 12 years. Yeah.
Sit on it will be 12 years.
Which one is this?
The Hexi, the blue task chair.
The blue is 12 years.
12 years. The other three are, we're going back to OTG, and I want to say it's going to be a five-year warranty again.
And how much is the blue one?
The blue one, arm, right now you're looking at a high back with arms. You would be getting a mid-back armless for 250, a mid-back with arms for about 300.
And on seating, I do, if I can, I typically would always say.
I would think that it'd be a good idea to have at least a few chairs that were.
Yeah.
It really is. And for 12-year warranty, again, at that 11th year, that 11th hour, arms on.
It's an ergonomically sound company. It takes a lot of pride in their chairs.
Not to put you on the spot, Jonathan, but the blue one was your favorite? Okay.
But, but real quick, aren't these supposed to be behind-the-desk chairs? And the ones that are outside the desk would, would not be on wheels?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. We don't have samples of the.
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought we were.
Not samples of office chairs.
We're just talking about behind the desks.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that's why I prefer people get a chance to sit in them and figure it out because ergonomics, I think, is important, and we have all different levels of people. I sat in Commissioner Everline's chair for many years until staff probably finally kicked me out of it and said, you're going to get your own chair. And.
I am. I'm, then the next guy, I'm going to get rid of the hand-me-downs. Or maybe I.
So, yes, so that, that would just be my preference. I don't know if the board wants that or not. I think we could put it in a location where people could just come and sit maybe behind the duty desk on the second floor. I don't know.
And there's one, if I may share, there's a lot of, there's a lot of features to each chair. And so there's not just the height, but there's also the rocking ability, the locking ability, and then how to actually adjust the tension in it. And so some people have, they say, Tori goes and sits in it, and then David goes and sits in it. It's a completely different. If it's not dialed in for David, he's going to hate the chair or vice versa. And so I don't know if it'd be better to have, like a one-on-one, to have an audience and for a review of the chairs with us first and then for the users to come through. I don't know. That's a lot of people.
Well, I mean, one thing you could do is, I mean, if it's a two-minute tutorial, right? We put it on Casey Place. They have to watch the tutorial. Then they can come down and sit in a chair. I mean, I don't want to make this too ridiculous.
Chairs can get complicated because I think.
Why not just an either-or? I mean, because we have one option that's $396, right?
I think that's for the.
For the judge's chair?
Oh, I thought it was more for the stout individual.
Well, if.
Right? The one on the left.
That's the heavy duty.
The heavy duty.
Okay, the heavy duty.
So why not just the blue and the black one on the end, and people can pick their, pick which one they want?
Yeah.
That's fine.
If you have any users above 300.
Yeah, if someone's above that, then we'll go to the.
Yeah, that's the only reason that one would be in the mix. Yeah.
What are we going to do with the old chairs? What are we going to do with the old chairs?
They're, well, it depends on, they are, it depends on who moves into that space and why. I suppose we could actually offer people, do you want to take your chair? Because like, I would take my chair.
Yes, and we have.
Okay.
AMP is actually bringing their chairs.
Okay.
A few, we know of, what, 10 prosecutors or something?
11 prosecutors have seats that want their chairs.
Oh, 11.
To keep their chairs.
There's some desks that, is it just one?
Two.
Two. There are some desks that they won't bring their desk from the other space and keep those spaces. So we have gone through that exercise.
Okay. Well, what about the, the chairs they're bringing? I mean, do we not need to replace them, or just deal with it when we get to it?
What AMP said about their chairs is that they were fairly new, they're satisfied with the, they fit the utility belts.
Okay, well, there you go.
We went through a huge chair buying thing, which you weren't here yet. I mean, there was like one year where we probably bought like 70 chairs or something. It was ridiculous. Everybody kept coming, well, we need new chairs, we need new chairs. And I mean, in all fairness, the chairs were, you know, 15, 20 years old. But I'm fine with just going down to the blue and the black on the end. And then if we do have anybody who requires that, we'll deal with them on a one-on-one basis. Want to go try them?
Yeah, we could, we can make a, put a note out that if you feel like you need a larger heavy-duty chair, let us know, and we can look at an option for that. And then, and are you guys comfortable with the standard chair for the conference rooms and the jury rooms?
Yeah.
It's a big boy, too.
Yes.
I like some of the stuff in there.
Try one.
There you go. That's, that's there.
Well, I'm going to look at that.
I think her was. I like that chair.
Okay, so you have direction for chair, and we can make a motion for furniture? Because the chairs aren't on any type of timeline, are they?
They still are. We need to, we need to solidify that order pretty quickly. I, you know, now that we have the chairs here, early next week, I'm going to start sending out a memo to-
Already sat down.
Which one did you like?
The blue one's a little nicer.
I'm impressed with the mid.
Yep.
It's more comfortable, for sure.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, yeah, just, you're free to put a deadline on it. And then I imagine we can give direction that between Jeff and David, they can-
Go sit in a chair.
Decide what they, you know.
Well, I mean, do you want to make a motion on this, or just have them provided at the next business meeting and we'll get it done?
Well, I want to make a motion on the furniture, because I think that one, right now, today, we can get that going. But the, the chairs, I think we can wait and wait one more week and do the 18th, March 18th?
I think one week is sufficient.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that chair is neutral enough in color and size.
Well, we have, they have color options, right? I mean, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a sample.
You got red, white, and blue?
Yes, we can make that happen. We could, yeah.
It's next year.
All right. Well, then I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve for the Justice Building Furniture procurement Global line for our desks.
Provided that the, the letter holds up with the-
Sure, the tariffs.
With the tariffs.
Yeah.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Tari?